Okay, and Mary, if you could mute, or you can sign off if you turn it over. Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Calling the meeting to order at 6:30. The planning board's meeting of July 14, 2021. First off, we attendance, let the record note that Larry is here, Lindsay is here, Steve is here. Richard is not here, and I am here, and Roger Hoyt is here as our associate member. Notifications, this is a high-grade meeting, so I have to read these notifications, so forgive me if I bore you, but agenda is to be posted on the town website, and includes items reasonably anticipated by the chairman 48 hours prior to the meeting. Votes may be taken, order and exact times of agenda items may vary at the board's discretion, except for public hearings, which cannot start prior to the scheduled time. Documents submitted for review can be found under the Planning Board tab on the town website. This meeting is being recorded, the recorded minutes will be the official record, but written minutes will be prepared for easier reference to the topics covered and the actions taken. If you are joining the meeting remotely, please keep your microphone on mute unless you have been invited by the chairman to speak. We also too, Lindsay or anybody, if you keep an eye, if somebody is in the waiting room. I don't want them. I don't know about my, this iPad, this iWatch, you know. So unless invited by the chairman to speak when the floor is open for public comment, please raise your hand, blah, 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 because nobody saw it anyway. Those representing the board must have at least one representative present at the meeting, not remote, with hard copies of the application and plans for the board to consider. Chairman notes, I have three, two notes here. Number one. Old business, and we said this, the Bray Ave, you need the board members to sign both the Form K and release forms for lots eight, nine. And we also need them to sign the access and utility agreement easement. Also, from the last meeting, you'll remember, I have not yet prepared and sent the letter to Green Ventures confirming that they do not need to apply for a scenic road permit, that was an item that we dealt with at the last meeting. Because they're not cutting any trees down or moving any walls. So I will send a letter confirming that, as well as the letter confirming that because we did not hold the site review within 45 days, they do not, will not be required or held accountable for that site review, and I spoke with Deb Phillips about that, and you know, I'll be crafting a letter in the form that we'll want to do those kinds of things going forward, and Deb will take a look at it and make sure that it's the right way to do it. And the final thing is, is I wanted to call the planning board's attention to the email I sent you all the other, on last Sunday regarding the public presentation of the LOPIT Local Rapid Recovery Program, LR RP, which will be on July 20th, 6:30 at the Public Safety Building, I really encourage you all to try to go to it. It's going to be a presentation that a grant paid for, that was applied for by the Economic Development Commission of the town, and it's really concerns, you know, the development of the town downtown area and how to improve it, you know, road, how to improve the, make the safety of the road out front here, and different things that they've looked at and studied. And that will be next week on July 20th at 6:30 in the Public Safety Building. And I'm going to it, and I think it would be really good if most of the planning board members can try to arrange their schedule to me able to have, go see that, but find out more information, just think there's information on the website, but there's also information in the email that I sent you. I have no other chairman comments, and since Richard is not here, there's no vice chairman comments here. So we've gotten to the hearings and applications item on the agenda, it's only 6:35, so we are going to skip over doing the common driveway one and go to the A and R at Sherbert Road, I believe that's you Val, so if you would like to present that to us and tell us what you did. That's what it is. I think this is it.
This is just a three-watt A and R, right on the town line, I left a little strip along the town line because they have a great deal of land over in the back. Hopefully, I can solidify something that's useful for that.
And so.
This is part of the 35-acre parcel that I bought through the auction from the town.
And you're dividing it into three lots.
Correct.
They're all 60,000 square feet.
200 feet from.
And 200 feet from. Exactly 200 feet or.
One's a little over because of the curve.
Oh, so I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can you just tell me your name, so I can.
Get it in the minutes.
Yep, is it Heather, no, is it that Heather Dunn, no, 21 Heather Dunn?
Yes, my address, yes.
Okay, what's your name, I'm sorry?
Valerie Diego.
Thank you.
Any questions? Other board members? I don't really have any questions myself. Pretty straightforward, Roger, any thoughts from your experience?
Looks fine to me.
Is there a motion to?
Except motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, and further discussion that we're here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no opposed? Val will sign this off, and you can pick it up from Heather either tomorrow, or, well, we'll sign it tonight, the ones that are here tonight, so.
Do you want, should we do it now, and then just hand it somewhere?
Well, I think it has to be.
Oh, she has to do, okay.
Something like that, so we'll, we'll, we'll sign it at the end of the meeting, and we'll get it.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number two, Don Lomé. Crossroad updated materials, you want to fill us in?
Yeah. At first, I started looking into this just before the pandemic, and I wasn't going to do the Zoom meetings, so. I'm sure you've heard that from other people my age.
I don't know how much, we're not going to be doing it much longer either.
When I came before the board originally, I'm asking, if you look at page one, to top the graphical map of the area, and it's the lot number four, which is outlined in green. I was asking to be able to divide that into three building lots.
Yep.
And at the time, the planning board had questions about the road that comes in off of Crossroad.
Yes.
And they asked me to do a little more research, so I have. So on page two, you see the lot again, and it's a proposal that we came up with, I was working with Joe Missoni. I'm assuming you guys know who he is.
I just, sorry, what's the road across, so this is Cross, and then.
Hold on, hold that up again.
So this is Cross.
Yes, it is.
So this is a road.
No name for it. It just says Town Road on the, on map.
It goes to the dam, right?
Correct.
So it's the town road that goes to the dam.
So is there.
Goes to the dam that forms Lake Wharton.
So isn't that, it's not a driveway?
No. I thought it was when I bought the place, but I found out subsequently.
So it's not.
It's a, I guess you call it a acre road.
And that's the drive, but that's the access road to your property?
That's the access road to the, to the lots that I'm talking about, and to the home I live in at the present time. I live, where you see the 11-5, that's where my home is now. All right.
Yep.
So I tried to color code him to make it a little easier. The question came in, the town road, and then you see there's a 40-foot wide right-of-way that lot 11-4 grants to the owner of 11-5, I so happen to own both of them. So that's, that's where some of the questions were arising. To help you clarify, if you go to page four. Yep, this is a, it's a copy, I couldn't make a copy of the whole plan, I brought it with me, if you want to look at it. That, when I was looking to buy 11-4, I had a surveyor, Zoc Surveyors out of Gartner, did some surveying for me, and, and this is, just I copied the part of the map that clarifies the relationship between the private road and the right-of-way. Okay, so that road continues all the way up to the, to the lake, and then it takes a right here and turn and goes over to the, to the Wharton Dam. So the question was, how much frontage was on the road?
And on the town road?
On the town road and on the easement.
So you, so lot 11-4, as you're presenting, it is 141 frontage?
100, well, 145.
145.
And then along the, the right-of-way and such, there's additional, it's three different numbers, 1154 and 141. And all of that adds up to 451, I think it is. Yeah, 451 feet. So prior to, prior to actually doing perk test and all of that, I had Charles Karen, I just made with him also.
So I'm sorry, so did you have perk test done yet?
No, no, that's where I'm heading now.
Sure.
If you look at page two again, there's an outline of where the wetlands are on the property. I had a wetland survey done by Charles Karen. And I don't know if you want copies of all of those, you know, the formal presentation that he gave to me. And if you want copies of the deeds on these properties.
Well, it depends on what it is you're asking, or right now, we have to clarify, you know, what it is you're asking.
All right, what I'm asking for, what it comes down to, is here again on page two.
Yep, yep.
I'm looking to put a common drive off of the road going into the property and dividing it into three building lots.
So four, three and four are your lots, correct? On the map two.
Okay.
Is your home on, is your home five?
My home is 11-5.
Yeah.
My present home, I want to build.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, which 11-5, on which one? Oh, right here.
The right side of the road is.
Yeah, if you're coming up the road to the.
So I'm talking on this one right here.
That's it.
The five?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I just think first, I mean, there's many other steps that we would need to do, you'd have to apply to, for an A and R first, and then come and do the shared driveway.
What's an A and R? An A and R is approval not required, it's what Val just did on this property, so you have property that you want to divide up.
Correct.
And you have to get a surveyor to give us essentially create a Mylar and create a, a drawing to divide it up. So you will do the same thing with this property here. Now, it will need to have, each one will, off that town road, would need to have appropriate frontage. It would have to, each lot would have to be amount of a square footage that meets the minimums of the, of the bylaws for that zone district.
Well, the position is going to be four, four acres.
Yeah, so it would not be, you won't have a problem with the acreage.
No, I think.
The biggest issue was town road.
That's the issue that we presented a year and a half ago, that's right. And that's why they asked me to do a little more research about the easement and so on and so forth. So I, I went back and read the deeds and came up with the numbers that are associated with the easement to the town road and so on, so on. But before I do perk test and all of that.
Yeah.
There's no sense in doing that if it's not going to be approved.
Yeah, well, the A and R is not that hard to do, provided, you know, you are meeting the minimum standards of the bylaws for that zone district. Am I saying that right, Roger?
Yeah, I, I only question the road though, because if it's not a road, who maintains it now?
I maintained it for 45 years.
But if it's not, so is it recognized as a town road that they maintain, because that's going to be another issue?
They don't maintain it, I.
I know, but so that, so who's going to maintain it if there's lots down there?
Does it, well, it belongs to the town, though, right?
But.
It is a town road that you've been maintaining.
400, that first 400 feet.
And that is a reasonable thing for you, you, you've been maintaining it in order to get to your house. Now, a lot of this is coming back to me now, and I just called up your house on Google Maps here.
Yeah, but just because he's maintaining it now doesn't mean, you know, you just, we need to make sure, we can't just have three houses there, and then you're going to maintain it, well, what if you, or, you know, it's, you just can't do that without.
Well, the town has to.
Can't leave them.
Town has to acknowledge their ownership of the road and their, and that this will come off, and that's something that I'm going to have to talk to the town administrator and, you know, the building, and I will. This, this is an introduction to this thing, because what, we don't have anything we can vote on now, because we have to.
Right.
We have to see, you know, you, you know, what it is, whether it does all, if all the lots do it, you'll have to get it, you know, surveyed and done, I've done a property, but appropriately, but I do understand what you're trying to do, you're trying to not pay the money to divide this land out.
There's no sense in running, doing perk test and, and doing all the surveying if we're going to run into difficulty with the town road, so I think.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just trying to put things in the right order.
I think you need to work on the town road first, and typically, it's, it would get adopted as a town road, or there's a different procedure, I don't know exactly what it is.
Clearly is a travel easement that the town, you know, because they've been using it to get to the dam, so.
Yeah.
And, you know, so there, there is that issue, we just have to get clarification there, so that we can then say, okay, this is road is an accepted road, you need to survey, get it divided appropriately as an A and R, you know, you bring the, you, step one would be the A and R, which basically says, these are the properties I want to divide, they all meet this current bylaws. That would be step number one. After that, step number two would be coming and doing what McSweeney is going to do next, you see, I have two examples right here, there, Val did an A and R, and presumably, Val will have some development that will happen on her three properties, which is why she divided it up, similar to what you want to do. Ed McSweeney is coming, he's already done his A and R for up the street, and he's coming in here and doing a common driveway for two of the properties up there. And we're then having to have a public hearing, do the common driveway, and we'll do the common driveway. But you're, you know, Lindsay's absolutely right, we got to, now that we, you're back with us, you have more clarity about how you want to divide that property up. We, we know that what the town road is, you know, on hindsight, you know, could have investigated that, you know, while Alder and Coke.
Years and a half ago.
We could have investigated that, and we'll do that, but now I understand it, do you remember anything further on this, Roger?
I think that was, the question was, where does the town road end, and what's the right-of-way and such, and then so how far beyond this first line does the town road go?
How far beyond?
About 200 feet, 150 feet or something?
The town road ends where, it's outlined in heavy black.
Yeah.
Hell, no. No.
And we're.
But it's a better shaped than Crossroad. Pardon me?
Orient your house from right here.
Okay, right over here, okay.
Okay, I know we have now a paving plan, which was all the town roads paved and unpaved and such, I don't know, is this on that list at all?
Is Crossroad on the list?
Or the, this, what you got?
I would doubt that's on the road on the list. I mean, I've been waiting for 45 years for the paved Crossroads.
So just to make sure, this is your house, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So, and.
Cross.
There's the lake, all right.
There's the lakes, a crossroad, comes a crossroad.
Yeah, all right, that is. All right, here's Crossroad.
Yeah, that's Crossroad.
But you can't really see much, because of the trees. Right, the road we're talking about is right here.
Okay.
So that's. All right, so what happens is we, we approach our house, and, and the road ends there, and then the easement goes from here all the way over to the dam.
So, and all of this is the property he wants to divide up?
Correct. This is Washburns, and this is Watsons, used to be Area Courseria.
Yeah.
Okay, so just, I'll show my colleagues over here.
I'm in a butter, but we're not, we're not voting on anything.
Yeah, we're not voting.
Just to put it out.
Property, this is what it's trying to light up, this is Crossroad that comes across here. All right.
Okay, so for, for the A and R, approval not required?
Yeah.
Who do I see for that?
Heather in the sauce here, you would see, you would talk to Heather, who is the, you know, land use officer.
I have to go to see her tomorrow.
So talk to her about how to do an A and R, but we definitely, one thing I did not understand from our first question was this, when you were back here before, and when Roger was the chair, I didn't understand that, you know, it's, we don't have any, we don't have any record or knowledge of how that town road, you know, what the, you know, the town's ownership, ownership of that and.
I can remember at one point, and I haven't been able to verify, but I can remember at one point, it was named Blanchard Road. And I believe Roger is the one that tried to research that and could not find.
You could not find whether it was Blanchard Road or not.
Do you remember that? I, at one point, I saw on a map that that town road was named Blanchard Road, and, and you could not find any.
You know what, I might be, I know someone who might have a map old enough that.
What makes a road, what makes a road discontinued versus an approved road? Dr. Lomé needs a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Approved to.
You know what I think it was? I, that road preceded the formation of, of Lake Wharton. Okay, all right, if you look at the last page of these material I gave you. No, not the second to last page. All right. That shows the property back before the lake was formed. All right. Yeah, town road right here, okay?
That's kind of what you have in your.
That's what I have in mind, all right? So this is before the lake was formed, they put, they put the dam in here, here's the brook.
Yep.
They put the dam in here, this became flooded, and that's, these stone walls apparently are under the lake water, I've, I've never looked for it. I'm going to as soon as it warms up a bit.
They raised the lake five feet, and that's when the stone walls got underwater.
Yeah.
New dam. New dam was raised.
The new dam, yeah, the old dam is down on my property somewhere around here.
Granny did that.
Yeah. That, that kind of complicates things sometimes. But anyway.
Yeah.
I'm guessing that that road probably went up to the farms, there was a farm owned by Irving Smith and, and other people, and that's now at the bottom of the lake, so I'm, I'm assuming that road probably went up there at one point. So when the town abandoned it, they probably said, well, as long as we can get to this house, then it wouldn't matter to go any further. I mean, that's just my guess.
I mean.
Yeah.
This is.
Do you follow?
Yep. I'm starting to see what you're, see what you're trying to do, yeah, and you're, you're talking about essentially this being the proposed common driveway.
Yes.
And that, that, that would serve.
Right.
And of course. I just think you'd have to, well, because you, all of your lots should have the frontage, so even if you have a shared drive, you still, like, this lot is landlocked, you know, even though you just didn't easement, so where's the frontage for this?
There's no frontage directly on that road.
Well, he's, he's, right now, he's trying to make this frontage be the frontage for all three lots.
Correct.
Because that's why it's a common driveway.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
As I said earlier, the, the heavy blue line is just something that Joe Missoni drew up real quickly. And I, I believe that all of that's going to need to change in order to.
Yes.
Do the 150 feet or whatever.
Yeah, you, you, that's why you'll need, you know, a licensed.
My, my guess is that this part of the line is going to come back here.
Yeah.
To give, yeah.
Yeah, that's why if you get a civil engineer, they'll know how to draw it so that it conforms to our bylaws.
All right, and that's part of the A and R?
Yep.
Yes, but, but you're right, you may want to just spend the money to do the test pits to see if it's even worth going through the rest of the process, that, you know, I guess, get some quotes and see what you can.
I think you're still going to solve the frontage.
Yeah, you still have to do that.
I solved the frontage first, yeah.
No, you don't.
No, because.
Go ahead, the public.
So Alex Zoc can do the survey, okay? We all know, this is Chris Moss, he's a civil engineer, okay? Val does a lot of WordPress ones, epic systems, I know a lot of them, we all use Zoc, okay? The question you're going to ask Alex is, can you create an A and R, that's not the question.
No.
The first question is the vote.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what we're saying.
Gated off, you, you certainly need to do a lot of investigation and get the planning board, a, a recognized person in the town.
Yeah.
Heather is only going to give you some documents to do A and R, that's step two, your first one is to figure out how far the town and what the town takes as ownership. That doesn't mean that you, on a, on a dirt road like this, they call the paper roads and so forth, and other towns have dealt with them. You can maintain it, you can start an association, like, for the future lots, but the town has to acknowledge that it is a road that they know you're doing, because the common driveway only allows you to go 500 feet, there's certain rules there when you go down the common driveway.
Yeah.
So that's why you need to figure out, where does this road start with the town, and then at that point, Alex Zoc then can figure out how to do your.
Joe Missoni is the one that's doing the work at this one.
Joe Missoni.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he is.
Yeah.
You need to figure the road.
Well, and we need to get, and, and from our standpoint, because we're an elected board, we don't know all, we have to get the town and town's legal account, everything, except, except this is, this road is our town, town road, this is, they need to say that to us, and we, and, and we.
I think they need to say that first.
Yes, but I think you're going to have to petition for that, or there, there's some certain steps that, and I think it's going to go, you're the one that wants it, the town's not going to spend the money to do all this, to get this road in there, just so you can have some lots on it, so.
You're going to have to find out if it's approved town road, it's.
Yes.
It's what the legal authority says, the status of that kind of road is.
Yeah, and they could be discontinued.
And it could have been a discontinued road, and, but it could be that the town has an easement on that road to get to the dam, it could be a lot of different ways that it might have been.
And if the town has trucks going in and out to get to the dam, that's going to help the case tremendously.
Yeah. Yeah, have they, have you seen trucks going up to the dam or the down?
Not for 100 years.
Well, no, we don't even have trucks back.
No, 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 their representatives, that the town hires to go up, and they, they do.
That's just as good.
They do recessions of the dam.
That's just good, if they're going, if they're using it to go up to the, we, we have to get clarity from the town that, yes, that's a town. That's just good, if they're going, if they're using it to go up to the, we, we have to get clarity from the town that, yes, that's a town road, they acknowledge it. You've been kind enough to keep four hundred feet of it, you know, clear to, to do, but that, it's still, once the town says that.
More than four hundred.
Yeah, yeah, once the town, once the town says that, um, you know.
So petitions for town to acknowledge it, it is.
It's, that maybe, I don't know the exact process, but you'll be, you can, yeah, you can find out, they're just, it's not something they would just typically go and do. You'll, you'll, the research will call on you.
The town or do I have to hire?
You just have to ask the town now and then the town's supposed to tell you what you have to go through, do.
Yes.
Alright, so I'll just tell Heather this and what they use to access the dam.
Yeah.
How do I get this to be a road? Is it a road recognized and if it's not, what do I need to do to recognize?
Once it's recognized as a, a road and we have some backup on that, then you can go to Zock or to whomever. You can get the A and R, you can get it subbed up, and they'll figure out if they're doing their job right, they'll figure out how to draw it up so that it meets all the requirements of an A and R, you know, so that it, so that it can be voted on by us as, this is, you know, these lots all meet, are not a subdivision and they do meet the standards of the bylaws and then, then when you have it and then it gets recorded in the registry of deeds and you then have a plan like this that you can say, this is how it's divided up and then you come back and ask for a common driveway for however you want to develop those three.
It's legally a town road. Two hundred feet of frontage, sixty thousand square feet, I think that's.
Sixty thousand square feet is not an issue, I thought it was a hundred and fifty feet in frontage.
No, but I mean, the thing is, the road, number one, that's your big, that's a big hurdle, right there.
Yeah.
Approved road or not.
Right.
You know, and then get it carved out so we get to two hundred feet on the approved road. Or even think about a proposed driveway yet, I think that's what we're trying to get at.
Yeah. Yeah, if the, the road approved and then the lots divided.
And then carve up the, the.
And then, and then.
To fit on those two hundred.
And then it just goes kind of.
What is, is the requirement two hundred feet on the road?
Two hundred, yeah.
Two hundred. Okay, I thought it was one fifty.
Two hundred, yeah.
Two hundred.
Alright, but I don't think you have a problem, if, if, depending on how you end up dividing up the lots and somebody who can do it properly will be able to advise you to do it that way.
Alright. Very good.
Um.
I'll see Heather tomorrow.
Yeah. Uh, we don't, we definitely have no intention of sort of giving you the ring around here.
No, no, no.
It's, it's kind of, it's a unique thing that you're asking us to do and it took us a while to kind of figure it out.
Started in ten years.
Well, you might not be done yet.
This is supposed to be my building, my retirement.
No, no, it's good, you've got a beautiful property, as anybody can see who looks at it from the aerial view, so.
Anybody wanna buy the one I'm in?
I'll talk to you about the lots.
I'm sure you would, a lot of people have called.
Thank you very much, Don.
I have other people interested already. Thank you very much.
Alright, Don, please thank you. So no action was required on that, but we gave him the advice that we gave. Uh, and now I'd like to open the public hearing for the common driveway on which Road, Road, uh, and Ed McSweeney and I believe Chris is gonna, you know, present it to us.
Sure.
Go.
So now, who's the secretary?
You can give it to me and I'll stick it in this pile.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Get one copy, so I can have that, I can turn it around.
Fine.
If you have any, do you have any?
No.
Okay, so, uh, as you know, I came, talked to you guys on a Zoom meeting to create lots one, two, three and four. And it's building currently on lots one and two. Um, we've held off on lots three and four because as you come up Main Street, Route twelve from the center of town, pretty steep grade, comes around a curve. There's some sight distance problem right there. So what we've done is taken our option of doing a common driveway here because, um, we want to improve our site distances as best we can by shifting the driveway, you know, over the, the north side of this lot and creating a, an access point here, starting off about a twenty-four foot width so we can have two cars meet each other at the road, um, with a stop line at the bottom here, the car coming down the hill. And then coming up here and serving a house on lot four and one over here on lot three. I've got a profile that shows I got very shallow grades going in here, um, so that works out pretty well. And I've got a little drainage system here to try and minimize, um, any flow going down towards Chris Conrad's house um, or down towards, uh, Winston Road. It consists of, uh, some swales around both of the houses. A little sump here that's gonna, um, transfer the water underneath the road through a cover and a little detention pond, it's hopefully not gonna look too aesthetic in front of lots, it should be, it's below the level of lots, I mean, the road, obviously. And, uh, and our soils are actually pretty good in this red line, the strip of the road here. So we're gonna get some infiltration out of it and I'm really getting very good results out of this, the two and the ten year storm and pretty well the hundred year storm too. Um, so once this thing, um, the, the little detention prime fills up, then it'll be run through a rip prep and grass swale and run down the existing swale that's running along the side of Route twelve. If you had it done, you would have had some practice with this, all this rain going down here. Have a chance to observe what's going on here a little bit, so, yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, both lots are gonna be served by town water and town sewer, we're actually gonna install an E1, um, low pressure sewer that's gonna come up through an easement that we're discussing with the, uh, uh, the DPW and also the electric service is gonna be running in the season as well.
All of this is on town water and sewer?
Yes. Yeah, no subject systems. And, uh, I guess, uh, you know, just to show you a couple of things that are on the plan. Um, this is sort of for mass DOT's benefit, so they have a nice clear view with, of what's going on, because I've, I've applied to them for a, a highway access permit. We've got a cross section which you guys require showing what the road's gonna be, showing that it's gonna be variable width, it's gonna be thicker pavement and, uh, and a wider pavement down at the street, uh, down at Route twelve. And then as we get away from that, we're gonna narrow down to the fourteen feet that you guys require in your regulations. And then once we get past the point where the two driveways, uh, diverge, um, then they go back to ten feet by the side. And, uh, you gotta, you guys request information about a sign, so I got a little sign so we can tell people which way to go to, to get to which lot and the public safety can as well. And this is just some of the details for the curbing for, uh, the mass highway's gonna want. I guess if you have any questions, I'll try and answer.
So the whole purpose is just because of the site getting into that?
Yeah, it's a very steep slope here too, so it just seemed like it made a lot of sense to try and do something, I think, right? And when we were initially gonna apply to you guys back in December and January, um, we, we had gotten a site located here for a common driveway, we were thinking about doing five lots and the same deal, just because the site distances are poor and to try and put a driveway through here was just gonna be sort of a mess.
I only two things, uh, and one is obviously the site, the safety coming up from the plan. I appreciate, I understand what you're saying really about the driveway and, and the safety of the driveway with the cars coming up the hill and stuff like that. That would be question number one and, um, who else has? You know, I, I'm kind of curious to understand what our public safety folks would say and, and, and know that, but that's just me. And the second thing is the drainage going down, once the drainage comes through your property, which you've controlled and it starts to go down the side of the road.
Yeah.
Chris Conrad, he's, I mean, he obviously is aware and isn't here, but, uh, you know, the butters and where will that water go when it goes down there, where are they?
Uh, well, there's, there's, uh, along the side of the road, there's a swale.
Yep.
And then eventually it gets down to here where we have a set of catch basins.
So there is a catch basin.
There are catch basins here and then there's a catch, you know, there's a drainage system that runs down.
There's another set double one in here somewhere in that swale, which is.
I know, well, that, that's back up here.
That's okay, because I parked here in that lot and then I walked past that.
Right. So a lot of the water, you know, a lot of the water that comes down all the way back up past Brown's property runs down and hits that double catch, you know, a drop inlet structure and is transferred across the road. And so, um, we're sort of, these two lots are gonna be sending flow in this direction, who obviously have been approved from us, you know, from DOT for these two lots for access, um, but we knew we had to do something more here. And this is the, you know, we did some soil testing, you know, right along the frontage, because we knew we'd have to do some kind of infiltration as well as a detention.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's just, the catch basin, you, where's the one that's down here that's gonna go there? Those are in the road.
Those are in the road, yeah.
Yeah. So there, the water's in the swale and when it goes down the swale, where does it go? Because that's going down a steep hill.
That runs along the gutter line of the road.
Okay.
Um, and then runs into the catch bases.
Okay, I'm not familiar with.
One, two, three?
Uh, one's here. There's one over there.
Yeah, one, yeah, but we're.
Four total.
Yeah, I'm kind of showing it in gray just because these are already under construction. This one?
That's under construction. And then there's one right next to it.
Okay, alright, that was. So, yeah, sorry, yeah, we should explain that a little later.
No. That's good. Other questions? Anything, Lindsay? Larry?
No.
Roger?
I went out there and sight distance is very short. You know, I know we require maintaining, you know, cutting back brush and such for the, couldn't make some sight lines, but who's gonna maintain that, because you, you got about a hundred feet.
I get two hundred, that's what I. No, I mean, I.
I mean, from what you can see.
Yeah. And, and there are, there are some trees that I would like to take.
Is that a new pole that was put there?
I don't know about that.
A replacement or something, but that's right where you would be if you're, if you're sitting in a car looking down the hill, that pole is right there.
Well, since I measured, I don't know whether that's, that may be near since I measured.
Like who?
Sight distance.
It's a state road, who's responsible for cutting back the brush?
Status, but.
You know, we're gonna say the homeowner is responsible.
I think that's fine.
But it's a state road.
Right.
How do they get permission to do it?
So, can I, um, can I ask what question you're talking about?
Between the stone wall and the paved area.
Alright, so on where the common driveway is, we have not cut down any of the saplings yet.
Yeah.
And part of it is because on a Zoom meeting earlier, uh, when someone else had gone into a common driveway, I heard a tree thing and I said to Chris, hey, I'm gonna wait until we have a meeting to bring up the trees. So.
Well, that tree thing, and then I think you're referring to, it has to do with it being a scenic road. This is not a scenic road, so it doesn't have the.
Same at town road.
Alright, so if I can, I'll just quickly. I'll be in some sense. So. If this is the common driveway area, will we wanna put, so you, you see there's the driveway here for this house. Further up the road, there's a driveway here for this house. And that, that had the same type of heavy brush, but we've cut all that. And the reason we cut that ahead of time was because the electric company, they made a pole from here. So there's a new pole that they put next to this driveway.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's, um, the Ashingham Electric Company put that, because we're gonna be running all the undergrounds from that pole. And we'll all then start going underground from there.
Because.
On the common driveway, there's a big pine, two big pines right here.
Yeah.
There's about fifteen saplings right here.
Yeah.
We're gonna remove all those.
I'm looking this way, because we, you had the stakes there, I assume that's pretty much where it's.
When it came down, there's more saplings here.
Yeah.
I'm gonna cut those straight down to.
This is a pole that, it's a new pole, but it looks like it's just a replacement, because there's another old one across with a guy wire or a line across.
Well, there was a new, there was an accident, an accident about months ago.
Oh, and that's the one?
And I think that's the new pole they had taught. That accident wasn't caused from this, apparently it was a driver coming down the hill.
Yeah.
Took a left and wasn't supposed to take a left until the day.
Been a couple of accidents in the last.
Yeah, and there is one sugar maple I'd love to see go.
Yeah, and we'll cut down any of the trees, it's, we didn't want to get rid of ourselves.
You know, I, I think that's smart, along that road.
Will come.
Though, it's, it's smart to have waited because there are a lot of sensitivities about the trees along the town, around this road and about any town road, so.
Well, I'm gonna throw this out, it's a state road, it's not a scenic road. Um, and I'd have to go out and take a specific look, but most of those trees are Norway maples and they are on the state's no plant list, they are considered an invasive plant. And they're just gonna keep, they are heavy seeders and in any, anywhere around here, that's, it's overpopulated with them. I would say, you know, for safety's sake and for, from my perspective, for the aesthetic purpose, you could, you know, I'm sure there's a couple in there that you might wanna leave, um, but I'd say, cut them and stump them, dig them up, get rid of them. You get, you get a landscape all the way down to the road, except around the.
Well, how we normally do it, any disturbed area, we do hide, we'll see.
Yeah.
So, but, again, any trees, and we'll be happy to meet anyone out there. We plan on cutting out the saplings, like I said, going into wherever, but that piece, going into it, but on the left hand side, we'll be happy to cut any tree somebody wants, if you mark it, we'll cut it.
Can we, can we take that finger and bring it over here? So we're right here, right? And.
It's a common driveway.
There's a pole right there.
Yep.
And then there's a pole right there.
Okay.
And I think that might be the pole that you're concerned about, or is that the one that was, it was one, right there.
Yeah, you're concerned about the pole.
Is it on, is it on your blow up there, anybody?
Yeah, it's right here.
Yeah.
Where's the, where does the?
It's pole right here.
State highway and town.
Yeah, Roger's concerned about.
Yeah. Where's the demarcation?
It is right here, you know, it's just a station right here.
So you, you. So, yeah, the property line goes, where does the, where is the line, the state line versus road line versus property?
The stone wall is actually on its property, at least, you know, yeah, this pe, this stretch right here, and I think that it's sort of a scattered stone wall in this area, first on top of this slope, so.
Somewhere there's a sign that says.
Yeah.
State highways somewhere along there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that, well, it goes from thirty to forty, right about, right, right there is where the two signs are. And right here, if you look at the state layout, this is, this, this is, the stationing is such that this is where about here, yeah. The change transition happens, yeah.
And as far as the electric poles, it gets a little weird, we've found out. Apparently down on Main Street here, that's controlled by Ashingham Electric Company. Once it gets to the state, it's controlled by Verizon.
Yeah.
So we had an access to do the underground, they had a basically, Ashingham Electric, now I'm back up here in the existing house, on the second driveway, Ashingham Electric has to get Verizon permission, which they can't refuse, but once they get it, then they came and sent the pole for us to do the underground wire off of, so that's that relationship. But we're not allowed to pull wires off those, so we gotta go over it because Verizon doesn't want anyone. So that's how Ashingham gets involved in it.
That's interesting, I thought Ashingham covered all the streets in our town.
No, they cover all of them, except there are and then it's the state and it's only X number poles, because once it gets up to the round block, it it continues up there, but again, if they develop those lots, any point, there's a relationship and Ashingham Electric has to do business with Verizon, even though that in case of an emergency and the wire has an accident, they have permission to go and fix the wires without calling Verizon, they can just fix it by their way.
Big brother. Yeah. And who, is that a painted stop bar?
Yes, it'll be a stop sign too.
And who maintains that?
I mean, we have an agreement, you know, that, that we submitted to you guys, that has all those things.
Okay.
Okay.
They'll be a homeowners, you know, uh, you know, it, it deals with the easement, the shared driveways, the easements. Other easements.
And who? Who's responsible for enforcing that, is that, uh, building commissioner? That, that stop bar is always.
Well, I honestly.
Yeah, no, I'm just raising the questions, I.
I think.
Haven't had one on a state road before.
Yeah, yeah.
The way this one's structured, like most of them, it's, you know, basically towns want it so that it's not their problem that there's a battle between the neighbors.
Right.
So it, it talks about, you know, how the neighbors have to get along, there's recommendations, we're gonna go for remediation, I mean, the usual stuff that the lawyers come up with.
I think it's sending the blue coffee and these.
It may be, I.
And it gets you.
Is our building commissioner gonna have to go out there and say, you need to paint that stop bar?
Gets recorded on the deeds and stuff too, so it becomes.
Right, but who makes the judgment of when that needs to be repainted?
Probably the building commissioner.
Yeah. Highway supervisor.
Highway, yeah, yeah.
But. Why?
Why?
Why would they be doing it?
To paint the stop sign.
Oh, yeah.
It's private. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It is private.
I, I would, uh, the only difference I would have.
Command to say, you need to get this done, and that's the coast of it. Potentially. Three, four?
Four.
Two, two, two. Two more ones.
What I, the only.
You narrow it down, maybe we can get it to one and then it'll all work.
Well, then we'd have a.
Yeah. The only thing I would, I not completely agree with you, Steve, on is, you, we don't wanna go give them at this meeting. You know, free license, just go down, cut all the trees down. It has to be done strategically and it has to be done.
Go out and, and mark them.
Cause the key thing for us is, it has to reflect the character of the town, we don't, you know. Wipe out, you know, and stone walls by.
Oh, those don't get touched.
Those aren't supposed to get touched in the state, you know, so they're, those, those are a little trickier because they.
It's not a bonding line.
Yeah.
In this case, yeah, and so, but I honestly, you know, whenever you get one of these mass DOT permits, it tells you don't cut trees.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to talk to Mass Highway or Mass DOT to be able to ask which trees we can.
Yeah.
What's the, the asked to site distance requirement?
And we're, we don't make it. Right here, this is, this is what, uh, these are the stopping distances, now it's, it's, I did these off of forty miles an hour.
Yeah.
But we're in transition zone, because people coming up the hill are coming out of a thirty. I, well, no, I mean.
Maybe, yeah, maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. They're hitting the gas.
No, it, and it's, it's a problem both ways, and you're right, it is a transition.
Yeah.
Um, and so, yeah, so, you know, we don't make it, but, um. We've got this approved for Mass Highway or Mass DOT before. So we're doing the best that we can.
Is that something that the board would have? The ability to waive?
I guess, I think so. I was just, I think, I think you should definitely, if you do decide you want to approve it, that you would say subject to. Um, you know, a highway permit from Mass DOT.
Well, subject to that, and I, and I would wanna get, uh, subject to, uh. I, I want our DPW director with regards to the drainage.
Sure.
Going down the side, I wanna make sure they're buying into this from a, you know, a waste area. Um. Uh, stormwater management system, you know, cause that is a problem in town that's been coming up quite a lot. About, you know, properties that have, you know, are contributing to their stormwater management problems, and we just want. Them, cause we're not experts in that, to sign off on this, to say, yes, it's, it's not gonna be.
Under Walz driveway.
Well, it goes down to the center of town, I mean, that's pretty high up there, and that, we all know water goes down, so. And how, how it goes down and how that affects, if it's a hundred-year storm, what is gonna be the impact to. To the property adjacent to it and to the properties that are at the bottom of the hill, and so that's what we have to. Uh, so I, it would be subject to that.
Steve Nims left, and DOT had basically approved this. We spent quite a bit of time, plus with Chris Conrad out there. He being more the advice, I'm not having an official capacity with Chris.
Yeah.
But with Steve and the official, he had approved that drainage and without it, we're going and stuff.
Yeah, I just gotta see, I just gotta have it in writing, that's the whole thing, I got, that's the problem, that's one of the problems we have with some of that. Cause there was a lot of verbal kind of yes agreement nods and stuff like that, and I, I have no problem with that as long as. I then can have it documented that it indeed is okay with them, and while we may have.
He said, I think, and Chris Mossman did the work, it's excellent, we understand it, it's in double drainage up by the, with the existing houses now. Uh, and he basically said. Your biggest issue now is with DOT and Chris Chambers, the engineering department there, they're gonna have to approve all this.
Okay.
He says, they take leadership, and that's who we're working with.
Okay, okay, yeah, and as long as we know that that, and that's, that's just a, that would just be a condition of our approval that we get it. Exactly, we get those kinds of things signed off on.
We could definitely talk to Rick Williams, I mean, uh, Randy, Randy Williams, the new guy, yeah.
And Randy also, we keep talking to him about this, he said the same thing, he said the leadership board and this is DOT.
Yeah.
That they approve of.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll have to, we'll have to make that a condition of our approval.
So, yeah, I think we're, we're at the twenty-five percent, uh, review point with them, they've asked for a couple of things, so. I am, hopefully by the time we get back together.
That's on the common one, they've already approved the other two, and we have that in writing, and we've given it to him.
Okay, that's good to know.
And this, you get two culverts under here, double.
Yep.
And that's on the, on the. Homeowner's property?
It's, yeah, it's partial. Cause I don't, I don't, I don't have the, I wasn't gonna have cover over it.
And they need, they need to maintain that then.
Yeah, and that's crawled out in the document with the association.
Okay.
So do we need motion?
Yeah, well, I was gonna, well, first off, we'd have to have a motion to close the hearing, I think, but I wanna, uh, defer. Roger, this is where I need your help in education about proper procedures, since I'm, since I haven't done this before, so.
I always had script to keep me in line.
And now I have you, so, so what is, what is the procedure we do to do this?
Thank you.
And or, and, and are there any issues that are here to still be discussed in the public hearing? That, you know, we need more information on. Um, before we should vote, or can we vote conditional to? To that, so.
Just to install the conditions, once you.
Yeah.
No.
Have we, have we accounted for all the conditions, you think?
I think you had, any, anything that doesn't comply.
Drainage and sightlands were our two big things, sightlines and drainage, and making sure that we have, you know, experts in those things that are. Confirming that they're fine.
So we get some more paper from the state saying that they.
That's a, a condition that.
That would be a condition.
Be stable.
For them, yes, done.
And. You know. What does the homeowner need to do to get, to maintain the site distance?
Yeah. Reasonable question.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
So, on the tree cutting, uh, is the board asking that we basically then work back to the state and Chris Chambers? And have him be the defendant of person that basically marks what trees once taken down, since it is, i.e. the highway covered by the state.
I think we should mark the trees, pick the trees.
I, I will mark it, and then, and then talk to Chris Chambers.
Yeah.
But I was wondering.
Yeah, it's not a public road, so if, if you get permission from the state to cut them.
And that's what we'll do.
Yeah. No, I would love, yeah, I mean, from, on a personal level, I'd love to see when you do mark the trees, I'll walk up there and see where you've marked the trees. But that's, but that's not our jurisdiction, so, that would be states would determine.
Well, I think it's good for you to be interested in, yeah.
Um, so, uh, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Some move.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is closed, and now we can, can have a discussion about. Um, you know, approval of the common driveway, do we need any further information, do we? Want to approve it with the conditions that we've outlined in this conversation?
I'm, I'm fine with approving it with the conditions that we spoke about in the meeting, about written approval from the state, saying that they're comfortable with the drainage.
Tree cutting, and the same, the safety lines, I think we want, I think we want it looked at to buy our. Own public safety people with regards to the, the sightlines coming out of there, making sure that.
So, who is that?
Probably be Larry. Not, not you, Larry, 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 our police chief.
They would have received notice of the.
Okay.
Hearing had a opportunity to comment.
Yeah, and they, we have not received any comments.
So is it just subject to DOT?
I think DOT. Approval of the drainage.
I'm just, and, I'm just a little confused as to who's supposed to be maintaining the, the intention bases and all of that, should we talk about the end at all, or?
I think that's DOT.
Even on the, you know, there's a, Chris has got a intention based on.
Yeah, no, you, you guys asked for a, a homeowner's agreement, right?
So, so that, okay, so that's in there.
It's in the.
No, 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 I, I, that's it, no, and, and, but also Mass DOT is also asking for the user agreement too.
Okay.
So they're, you know, they're both interested in reviewing the document, so you guys should have that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, 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 I will tell you, I don't think it talks about the signs or the stop sign, so we should probably amend it to add those things in there.
Mm-hmm, yes. Okay, so that will be a condition as well. Stop signs.
Stop signs in the, in the house sign, stop line. We need.
Just have one, yeah.
And that's in there.
Is this gonna appear like a road, and are people gonna turn in there and thinking it's a street? Seeing that it's so wide, it's got a stop sign, it's got a painted bar. You know, is that a concern? How do you prevent that, and then someone having to back out onto the road?
Um, well, I mean, I don't think Google would send anybody there, because there aren't any crossroads that are nearby that they would mistake. Um, I, I don't know that, I mean, there's always gonna be somebody, but I mean, I, I don't think.
Is the state calling for the sign and the line?
This is what they made me do for a couple of the state highway ones.
But, but have they specifically for this one? Cause I was just gonna ask the stupid question, why, I'm even wondering. I don't know why you need a stop sign coming out of the driveway, but.
Just, that's just my comment is that it makes it look like a street rather than a driveway, yeah.
I mean, further down the road, on the other side of, Corey Hill, the driveways coming out of there don't have that. That's the state highway too, right?
Uh, I, I had one with similar kind of type sight distances, further down Route twelve in Westminster, and this is what we ended up with.
Yeah.
So I'm just sort of regurgitating it here.
So if DOT doesn't request it, can he remove the stop sign?
Unless.
Well.
Unless this board thinks it's.
Apply to them with this.
Yeah.
Same question to DOT, yeah.
It's good luck getting specific questions. DOT now, it's all.
It's, it's.
Yeah, I know they're working at home.
Well, they, they have a new, a new kind of system called shafts, and every. So, yeah, you just submit stuff and then.
Falls into the bit, never comes up.
No, they, they do get it back.
They do.
They send you emails frequently to update things. Cause they'll say it's now twenty-three percent, and it's thirty-three percent, and forty-three percent, and. But as far as calling and asking questions, it's not really.
Recognizable for that.
But the other one was, I mean, the sight distances were even worse here, uh, on Route twelve, that section of Route twelve, twelve that runs through. You know, Westminster, which is kind of a little bit of a known answer, everybody just flies on it, and, and we eventually got approval with this. This sort of, uh.
I can, I can see it if it was five houses in here.
Yeah.
Oh, two houses? It seems silly.
I, I, you know, I, I, I think of it like. You know. A young mom in a hurry, something, just, just to stop to remind me people that, stop, it's, you're intersecting the road. Or private drive, or don't let people coming in, it's a driveway and coming out, stop, I mean. Take it any way you want, but that's mine, keep them alive.
Yeah.
I mean, we can, if you want, we can probably, you know, Ed can set them, set the stop sign back.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I mean, we can probably do something like that.
Do something.
Well, what if you put parentheses under it, option?
Rolling, rolling. Rolling.
I, I'm sorry, I stepped out from the, but, anybody, you're, are you just presupposing that they're gonna ask a stop for a stop sign or?
I, I am somewhat, yes.
I'm not. Steve had a, had a good point, it just reminds the people coming down the driveway.
Yeah. I just, but. I mean, seriously, do.
Yeah.
Does a homeowner need a reminder that they're coming down the driveway, turning into a state highway?
You'd say.
I mean, I, I mean, obviously, if the state were to require you to do that, do that, I'm just saying that. A driveway serving two houses.
Yeah.
That looks like a driveway, I would personally ask no more than you have a stop sign on your other two driveways.
Yeah, you don't.
You don't, so, I'm just saying, why?
Or, to make it just part of the homeowner's agreement, not, not the official.
Well, I think if you put it on state property, the state would have to maintain it, so you'd have to put it on private property.
Yeah, that's right, I think, we, we could set it back if it can, you know, I don't think there's anything wrong with putting a stop sign there, I mean, I think it covers all of us.
Um, Ed, do you want it?
I'll be honest with you, I just wanna give permission to do that.
Oh, I know that, but do you?
As far as, you know, I never gave it a lot of thought, however, thinking what Roger just said, he's absolutely right.
Okay.
That I've seen people, and if they see the stop sign, because we have to buy the demographic, and buy just the size and make it kind of wide going in there.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right, I could actually see people pulling in there thinking, oh, this must get you up to the woods, and they aren't realized. I wouldn't, this is just into a house.
Yeah.
And you, that stop sign.
So I, I just.
We, we register, so I never thought of that, to be honest, I can set it back.
Maybe put a private way on, on the backside of the stop.
Said, but put a stop ahead, maybe.
Yeah. Yeah, you could, if you pulled it off, you're right, you could do a stop ahead, you know, you know, to your own, to the own owners, and that's more of a courtesy to the owner, and. Your homeowners association takes care of it, and it doesn't even come into the play of the state, but obviously, if the state. Made you do it or wanted you to do it, then that would be a cancer.
The other situation, I, I don't know.
I'm, I'm just saying, and asking my colleagues, is there any reason for us in the. We don't, I don't think we need to make that a requirement of our conditions. Uh, we don't care whether you have a stop sign or not, if, if we want you to do what's safest and best for the owners, but you own that. We don't own that, that's, that's our problem, that's your problem, not our problem. So, I, my only thing is to concerned personally about the drainage and making sure we've got. DOT and everybody's dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's, cause we have a hundred-year storm. Two years from now, and the water's coming down, you know, and, and, and we didn't do our job, you know, it wasn't properly. Engineered or taken care of, then we, we wouldn't have that, and then on the, the tree thing, just. You only cut down the trees that you need to cut down, at least the line Route twelve, from my.
So on that. Chris and I will, well, Chris, we will make sure that Chris Chambers is aware of it, if he'll come out. I see Chris Conrad all the time, so for his safety, I'll explain it, so ten minutes is possible, we'll make sure we get there and put two on the tree.
So on the safety, on this, on the safety of the turn, on the tree cutting, and, you know, the expectation is, is that. You're gonna maintain, you're gonna not jeopardize the, the character of the road in the town with your tree cutting. You're gonna cut it down to make it safe, but you're not gonna jeopardize the character of the town, and that would be a condition that we would have. Any other conditions, folks?
No, so you wanna add that condition?
Yeah.
That actually sounds good, I mean.
To the character, you know, that, that, the tree cutting will be done for safety only and not jeopardize the general character. And that means the saplings can go, stuff like that, and stuff that's gonna make it dangerous, you know, it should go, but. Uh, and then you'll get your approval through the.
Well, on that note, just a side note, how we're doing the, um, on the easements that we filed. We actually moved towards that, we're going towards Chris Conrad's in that corner, you notice there's a lot of large trees. Not on the road blocking, but further up, we moved the easement, so we did not have to cut those trees. So we're moving the line intentionally to save those trees.
The easement wider, so we could go around the back of trees.
And it's with, with the sword.
So, and I understand I'm not on the curves there, then.
Absolutely, yeah, they're looking polite, yeah.
And, and, and try. And, and, and trust me, I'm not being the one that's trying to be prescriptive about which trees you cut down. I'm just more cared about you maintaining the character of that, of that curve and the, the look in the town and I, you, you all know what I mean. I'm confident that you do.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve. With written approval from DOT and the tree cutting will be done for safety and not jeopardize character of the town.
Any other comments, anything? Roger, you seem, seem to be good with that. All, all in favor, say aye. You post, hearing none. Common driveway approved with those conditions.
Thank you.
And, uh. We'll get the letter out, figure out.
File of the last one we did.
And then, yeah.
I put a lot of things in bold to make it. Clear that the homeowner, the applicant has things to do.
That's true.
Before the occupancy permit is issued.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Yes. You should be able to collect them by Monday. I'll have it done tomorrow. Uh, I, in fact. I got it. You, Larry signed these two, you can show.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, okay. All right, uh, public comment, no public comment. Nobody from the public to comment. Uh, administrative matter, matters. Uh, number one, wetlands bylaw amendment follow up. Um, I, I sent you all a copy of the edits that Marshall Dennis. Um, has suggested and proposed. I have given those to Deb Phillips to, who is reviewing both the original and. Uh, and Marshall's edits. Deb is on board with us putting this on the agenda for August eleventh. She will have her review. And, and recommended final wordings. Um, there you'll notice that Marshall made some, uh, rec, small recommendation edits to the map. So the goal is, is that at the August eleventh meeting, we will. Marshall will attend that August eleventh meeting and, uh, so the goal is, is that at that meeting, we will. Finalize a consensus draft. Um, from the town that will then go to the state for final approval. When it goes to the state for final approval, it comes back from them, we would hope that sometime in the fall. Before our six month time period is up. Um, we will have a special town meeting and we will be able to get it to be voted on at the special town meeting. If we do not succeed in having a special town meeting. Within the six months since ours, which was in April. So we only have like three months to go, we will have to go through the rigmarole of having another public hearing on it. And it should, was, the last one was not difficult, so I don't expect this one will be difficult either. It will probably be pro forma, uh, because of that. So that's all there is to report on the wetlands. Uh, by law amendment, um, committee reports. I know that, uh, the big thing on the economic development is, uh, Richard's not here, but the big thing on economic development. Is what I mentioned earlier in the meeting, that there is that presentation that will be on July twentieth. That's, uh, July twentieth at six P M. Excuse me, July, yeah. July twentieth at six thirty. And it's a public safety in some public safety building. It is a presentation. By the local rapid recovery program. It's that email I forwarded to you from Rosemary, um, that basically is promote, she's trying to push it big times. And, and it's important for you all because there's some, there's. It's just grant oriented, yeah, it's, there's some serious money. That we're, uh, that they're kind of lining us up for.
State economic or?
Well, no, the, um, Massachusetts planning, uh, or Montechusis. MRPC, um, we're up, there's some grant possibilities there. Uh, Rosemary's got several others that they'll all sort of, but this, this is part of this whole thing. And, uh, it's a good thing to, uh.
Be there.
Be there. Um, so that is. Um, that economic development, nothing for, to report on the Maritron Review Team. Nothing to report right now on the bylaw review committee that's kind of on a hiatus for the summer.
I wanna like, wanna know what's going on. What do we contact at the state? The, the, what's the commission call? Will they know if we say? What about the guy on one eighteen or what about the one in, in Route twelve? I mean, do they have a status that they can say, well, this is what we've talked to him two weeks ago or two months ago?
I, we would, I don't know, I don't know the answer to who we would call it to state. But I, it's, it's in there in the lap and until they come back with approval from cannabis control, it's not approved. Uh, if you wanted to, we only have one point three licenses. So we only have one license for retail that we can give and right now the only one is nineteen.
Manufacturer.
Pardon?
What about manufacturer?
There's no limits on that.
Okay.
On manufacturers, no limits that I'm aware of.
There's three plan.
Uh, there's, there's two grow, three, uh, there's two grow in one manufacturing. Other than what they're doing up at one nineteen, cause one nineteen, they're doing retail to manufacture, they're doing all three. They're gonna, they're gonna cultivate manufacturer and retail up at one nineteen. Uh, so that's there, so, um, Roger, do you have any reports from your committee?
From MRPC, um, you know, as, as I said last time that I asked for them to give us an update for this meeting. They called me right back and gave it to me before our last meeting, so I updated on that. I'll reach back. Uh, Jason's on vacation this week, so as for the zoning map, I'll follow up with them again next week. Um, as far as the wetlands one. Uh, would you like me to invite Jennifer to come to the eleven and can she do it remotely?
Oh, yes. In fact, I thought she was copied on what I said. Yeah, so she was invited to the eleven. But if you would follow up and see that she comes, that would be good. Cause then we would have all, we would have all the interested parties there. We'd be able, all I wanna do is get a consensus to what the wording is gonna be in that thing. It's nearly done. And if we can, we, it did thing that Roger, that Marshall said that's very correct. When we go before the town. Uh, before, in a, but at a town meeting to get it approved. We don't want one board disagreeing with another board. We want everybody on the same page and that's why Marshall's. We, uh, that meeting that we'll have on the eleventh will, uh, will be to avoid that. Um, any other, uh, Roger?
Capital planning is not meeting. I think. Just to follow up, in an earlier meeting, you, this board proved me being, that doesn't mean, so the select, and I guess at their next meeting will. Uh, appoint me for the next year.
For Montechusis, oh, for capital planning, yeah. Um, and you had the Montechusis transportation thing too, right?
I think we're all set with that, you know.
Okay.
Both of mine on that, um, MJTC. Only one we've got, I think, is, uh, Route one oh one and. That's still at the twenty-five percent review stage and those in the town is corresponding with Weston and Sampson on. Any comments DOT had, so once that twenty-five percent is approved, they'll schedule a. Online public presentation. But that hasn't been scheduled yet.
Okay.
Um, but we're, no change in the status, it's still listed as, uh. Construction for twenty-four, twenty-five. Started construction. That what I said in that email there?
I don't remember.
Still on that.
Okay. Larry, anything on complete streets? They're digging up the sidewalk and they haven't been back. Uh, I do, I can tell you the inside story on why they haven't been doing any work the last two weeks, just out of curiosity. Apparently the company that won the bid on it is down on the Cape. So whenever there's rain or threat of rain, they don't make the trip up. So that's why you've seen with the rain that we've had in the last few weeks, that's why you've seen that. You know. Stagnation in that work, but, um, you know, once they can put together a week. And or week and a half or two weeks of work, they should be able to get that wrapped up and let's just hope they can do it before we get to September.
I guess. The town has an extension with the, whoever provided the funding for it.
Oh, yeah, I think they're, they're, they're all set with that. Yeah, I think, I think that funding has already been allocated to them. They have the contract. This firm. Yeah, well, this firm has to get it done, you know, it's on a finished product, so.
It's on the website.
That's where we are. Have I forgotten any committees?
This is gonna be poured, right?
Be poured, it's gonna be. I, and, and the same thing's going down the other side. So pretty much from the statue all the way down to center.
Pleasant Street?
Yeah, Pleasant Street or I think.
Those historical society commission, uh, society building and then the three houses that are pushing.
And it's gonna, it's gonna have a profound effect on the parking lot that, uh. For the church, it's gonna have a profound effect on that.
So, yeah, they're gonna have, if they're gonna put a sidewalk through there, that, that's a big draw.
Yeah.
For that.
Yeah.
I didn't realize it was on both sides.
Yeah, it's going both sides. It's just this section. Uh, they can only do it in four hundred thousand dollar chunks. No, it's no, two, the two sides from School Street.
Yeah.
Or from Cushing Street down to Pleasant Street or whatever. Then there's going to be another section that's going to do the center of town and another grant. So they, this is be several years of trying to get the whole town looking right. And it's, um. You know, the only thing that the town's paying for is, uh, the, I think the, the problem they have with the next section is the next section is a. Half a million dollar thing and the town has to decide either how to divide it up. So that they don't have to come up with a hundred thousand dollars, you know, but the four hundred thousand is coming from the state. So. Um, as I understand it, you know, and for the record. Um, the town notices, uh, and announcements, I received some town notices today. Uh, for your information, I will forward them all to you via email tomorrow. So that you at least can see these, so that I don't have to read them to you. But Gardner Z B A has a meeting on July twentieth at six o'clock. And of course, you all aren't gonna be at that because you're gonna be at the, uh, the one we're having in our town.
I'm not gonna be there either.
And you're not gonna be there either, okay. Oh, you're gonna go to Maine?
No, I'm not.
You're going to Maine and you're going somewhere else. Uh, but anyway, uh. Tiffany, um. Uh, Boulevard, uh, uh, there's a Tiffany Boulevard, uh, parking matter. There's there, uh, fifty, uh, fifty-seven Clermont Saint. Uh, uh, Ceramont Street, Clermont Street, there's a variance for frontage. At seventy-five Oak Street, there's a multifamily hall, uh, variance. Uh, and at, uh, two forty-two, uh, Green Street, that's Haywood Hospital. There's a surgical center and a medical building that requires, uh, Z B A action at Gardner. And then they had three other notices, uh, the variance was granted for one sixty-one Chester Street. Uh, notice in Gardner, special permit was granted for thirty-one Branch Street. Gardner, uh, had a variance granted for zero Matthew Street as well. And, uh, we did, the town did receive a notice of intent to sell. Um, a property, land off of Old County Road, Ashburnham. It's currently in Forestry. It's not to us, this is just to let you guys know that. Um, there is a, a land sale that's going up. They, they wanna. Make it residential, which means it comes off, it, it goes back on the tax rolls and they have to pay the, uh. The town has to vote on it having, taking its lean off. So that's in the selectmen's hands, but that's just to let you know if you have. Any, if you want the details, I can give you the details, but that's about Hope County, County Road. Um, and then we are not going to approve the minutes from the last meeting, they're not quite ready. Uh, but Lindsay will, uh, complete them and send them to us for advanced reading for our next meeting. And we'll then approve them and maybe these men, these minutes. Okay. One thing too, I wanted to just mention. With regards to tonight's meeting and the common driveway request. I didn't see this until Monday. And in my opinion, this was one that all of you and me should have been able to read. In advance and really sort of think about and know ahead of time. And so we were all sort of. Shooting from the hip, having not had any, any preparation. So I'm gonna talk to Heather. Uh, because this was actually put on the agenda without even asking me. It was just put on the agenda. Uh, so I'm, I'm sort of recognizing in my new role that I don't want that to happen anymore. And I'm gonna talk about, you know, we need to have time to look at this stuff ahead of time in order to do our job right.
I can just say at that same issue of. You know, they wanna, this partly is when she has to send it out to other boards for comment. And it's, um, sightline interview and things, it says. That they have to reply with, we have to send it out within ten days and they have to respond in two weeks and. All the boards may not be meeting in that time period. So she's, part of it is she's asking what are the dates that they need to comment back by, but. The issue I always had was. I wanted to approach, discuss with the board first dates, sending hearings to make sure. They had quorum and such. Um, that's always, they have time to get notices out and such, but the board needs to know. Chairman needs to know that you're gonna have quorum and the board members need to know, have time to.
But you look, you look at this, a lot of work was done on this and we didn't even know it was coming.
Yeah.
And that's not supposed to be that way. We should have been the first to know it was coming. And then had an opportunity to really line everything. Because for example, on that asking other boards for approval. Had we known about this and the, and had an opportunity to study it, I would have personally gone to D P W and said. Do you have any issues with this, you know, or I would have gone to public safety and said, would you look at this one for sure? You know, because they get these things and it's just comes in their mail, oh, they want comments.
Yeah.
And they put it off to the side and we gotta. This is, this is just me venting a little bit that we have to change the culture a little bit in the town.
Just say we want everything, you know, it needs to be received fifteen days before. It even gets on the agenda and we should get it ten days prior so that.
I understand that. You know, it's summertime and we're having one meeting a month. We wanna try to squeeze things when we can.
Yeah, yeah, and that's where they were coming from and that's, but that's the normal thing. But again, on this thing. This has been in the works for a good month, you know, and we, the preliminary stuff. We put, we didn't have to wait for them to get this notice out, you know. They could have gotten into it. And you know what, what probably should have been our answer there? Oh, July second, this isn't, there's not enough time to make their, uh, July meeting. This have to go on the August meeting agenda.
You know, if you feel that, or, or board members feel they haven't had sufficient time.
Yeah.
Continue and go to the next meeting, which in case this.
Exactly.
Another month and maybe that's not fair to the applicant that. Maybe that's not fair to the applicant that.
No, but if she.
We have plenty that, you know, time to open a hearing.
Yeah.
We don't need to do the first available date, that's.
That's exactly right.
It's, you know.
And, and, and it also gives her something to say to the applicant, oh. I just got this, you realize this is what the timeline's gonna be, this, there's not enough time for it to make the July meeting and it have to go on the August meeting. And for most of them, they'll just learn to deal with it, if they have a real hardship, then. They can, you know, make their appeal and we can decide whether we care or not, but I, I'm, I just wanted to. Get that out there, that we gotta have a conversation about process and timelines and, and all of that.
My response whenever something was, and the question of do we schedule this, and I need to discuss with the board first, and that would be my response, don't set the date yet.
And, and, and clearly, you know, on the other case too, you take someone like Don in this whole thing. I couldn't, I didn't remember it until he presented it, and then I remembered, we talked about it a year ago or whatever. And on that one, he came in here putting it as a sort of an applicant, it should have been made more in public comment.
Yes.
And not in, you know, because it wasn't any action to take on it. And he should have had the ex, he should have had his expectations managed before he came in here.
Yes, just like the other gentleman.
Exactly.
Last week.
Yeah.
Sometimes if things were on the agenda, it was to give members a heads up that.
Exactly.
Someone's coming in to ask us about.
Yeah.
An A R P or an open space plan.
Yeah, and we can never, we should never have any action item thing on the agenda. That we don't have materials to look at in advance.
Yeah.
You know, uh, and so if there's no materials in advance, it's in public comment, you know, it's, it's. It's pushed, it's, it's a question. And it's, and, and, and there's some note saying, this is to ask about how to proceed with this issue. And, and make that clear, so anyway.
Just to carry on my thought about Donald May and his. That's, um, I don't know, it's an old cart road, I don't think it's, I don't think he's improved it to be a, a discontinued. Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, he's got a lot of work ahead of him. You know, and I think we spelled it out really precisely, find out if it's, if it's approved road. You know, then you can carve up your, carve up your lots and then you can go from there, but he's. He's gonna have to prove that it's a road, it's, it's not a road.
Yeah.
I always thought it was his driveway.
I think in that one, and what we had asked him back then was, what's so much, one, find out that it is recorded as a road or. You know, check the deeds and see if they.
Yeah.
Is, is that a right of way through that somebody's property or is it property, road, property? And then what happens when it ends, it goes to it right of way? How much of a nightmare was Marshall Mills back in the day? I just remember the name or something, but yeah. Remember that one? That was horrible. Yeah, but, you know, there's. But there's nineteen ninety four town meeting, which designated, accepted roads, classified some as discontinued and set that. Yeah. Um. That should be, you know, Heather, where's the discontinued roads, okay, it's not on the list, it's not on the rest of approved roads. It's on the list of discontinued roads, it ain't road. Yeah, and you know, this, the pre zoning ones, if it existed before zoning.
Yeah.
Then it exists. Town is discontinued. But there's a paper trail. And. Somewhere in the file cabinet, I saw it once, is, uh, some. History of roads in Massachusetts and the classifications and.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's not, it's unique. Yes, to say the least. A lot of things in Massachusetts.
It's eight oh five, do I have a motion to? There's been a motion and approval to, uh, adjourn the meeting, all those in favor? F Y, I didn't say this for the record, but it's their next meeting is August eleventh and the one after that is September eighth, so. Just have one in August and then the first one of two in September. And, uh, if there are no, um, my, my modus operandi from going forth. If we don't have any, any hearing or applications to consider. I would, a week before, I'm gonna start saying, you know, we. We're canceling the meeting, you know, and unless, unless there are. Yeah, um, important administrative updates to bring to the, the committee, but otherwise, uh. Again, going back to what I said before, we want to. Uh, you know, we wanna set a, an, an expectation. That we follow a timeline and we, we're able to see things in advance so that we can come prepared. And, and with our questions and with the issues that we have and, um, you know, we did the one to. Tonight, the common driveway, and I'm still not sure we got off, you know, because, you know, we were shooting from the hip, so.
Yeah.
Good.
The state approves it.